Regular meeting number thirteen will now come to order. Please stand for the playing of the national anthem.
Almighty and eternal God, as we gather a bit more slowly following Saint Patrick's Day, we thank you for the festive spirit that helps to bring the Irish and those who purport to be Irish together. In the midst of March Madness, we thank you for the success of the Ohio State basketball team and pray that they continue to excel in the tournament play. On the local level, we congratulate the girls' basketball teams from Afrocentric and Olentangie Orange for making it to the state tournament and pray for the boys' teams from Northland and Waterson as they compete this weekend for state titles. We pray for newly-elected Pope Francis, that his charisms of humility and poverty will serve to connect us to one another as brothers and sisters in the human family. We pray for communities that are being torn by violence, that hate and prejudice yield to compassion and forgiveness. We pray for members of city council, as they begin another meeting, that they conduct business with respect and reverence for one another and the general public. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Craig Klein, Miller, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the journal?
No move.
Clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein, Miller, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. This week's communications received by the city clerk's office are listed on the agenda and will be published in the city bulletin. Are there any other communications to be read into the record?
Not at this time.
Are there any resolutions or announcements from members of council? Councilmember Craig.
Thank you very much, President Ginther. Tonight, I'd like to really highlight the achievements, the extraordinary achievements of Officer Steven O. Nance of the Columbus Division of Police. Last week, at the 2012 James M. Lenovick Veterans of the Year Award Ceremony, as a part of the honor of all of our employees, Officer Nance was the recipient of the award. Officer Nance has been a member of the Division of Police for more than sixteen years, with assignments in parole and the Detectives Bureau. He is currently assigned to the Strategic Response Bureau as a member of one of the community response teams, where he serves the citizens of Columbus with the same level of dedication and commitment to service as he does as a staff sergeant in the 121st Security Forces Squadron from Rickembacker, Air National Guard Base of Ohio. Sergeant, Staff Sergeant Nance was called to active duty on 7 July 2011 in support of Operation Enduring Freedom and was deployed at the airbase there in Afghanistan as a member of the 455th Security Forces Squadron until he returned in March 2012. During the deployment, he distinguished himself by leading fifty-six combat missions, orchestrating search and recovery missions, synchronizing Defense Forces while under attack with attack force Talon, and coordinating residual base defense intelligence, surveillance and reconnaissance support, leading to the capture of two insurgents. During a dismounted parole of a fuel truck park area, a suicide bomber detonated an explosive vest within fifteen feet of Sergeant Nance's squad. Despite his own injuries, he provided immediate first aid to wounded local nationals and erected overwatched security positions while leading his team withdrawal from the blast area. His team's detection and interception of the suicide bomber prevented the attacker from carrying out his intended mission to kill as many coalition forces as possible. Sergeant Nance and his team's actions saved countless lives. Despite his busy schedule, Officer Nance managed to be a constant source of support and counsel for many deployed airmen. He continually provides comfort and support to another airmen from the squad, other airmen from the squadron. As a direct result of injuries suffered from the suicide bombers failed attempt to gain access to the airbase, Officer Nance underwent surgery to repair his shoulder and one hip. During the weeks and months that followed his surgery and rehabilitation, Officer Nance used his time to pay contributions to the countless veterans from the squadron who went before him in service to the U.S., to the United States. He organized countless squadrons of photographs for display, covering an entire wall in the orderly room. He also ensured display cases were filled with memorabilia from both previous and present conflicts, honoring many servicemen members from central Ohio. And then finally, Officer Nance continues to provide support to veterans here in central Ohio. Specifically, he assists Vietnam veterans from his hometown in Brown County. He assists veterans with day-to-day tasks they can no longer do on their own, such as cutting firewood. He also shares his experiences with these veterans to educate them on many different benefits available as a result of their service to the United States. The exemplary leadership, personal endeavor, and devotion to duty displayed by Officer Nance during his past year reflects great credit upon himself, the United States Air Force, and the city of Columbus. As a result of Officer Nance's actions, he was awarded the Bronze Star, the Purple Heart, the Army Achievement Medal, and the Air Force Combat Action Medal, the city of Columbus and certainly the mayor and the administration and Columbus City Council. Thanks, Officer Steven O. Nance, for his outstanding, this outstanding achievements to the Veterans Committee, and salute his extraordinary achievements as the recipient of the 2012 James M. Lenovick Veterans of the Year Award in recognition of his contributions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Craig. Councilmember Klein.
Thank you, President Ginther. One resolution, I'd like to invite Steve Torcel, Homes on the Hill, to come up, sixty-two X. 2013, to honor, I'm sorry, fifty-six X. 2013, to recognize and honor Homes on the Hill as the 2012 Ohio Community Development Corporation of the Year. I move for passage.
Second. Craig Klein, Miller, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Mr. Torcel, congratulations. Tell us about the great things that you're doing.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I have a couple of staff members, Melanie Buller and Belka Schoenhau, if they'd stand, because we couldn't do anything without our staff. First, Council President Ginther, fellow members of council, Councilmember Klein, City Attorney Pfeiffer, Honored to Dorian. It's a privilege to stand up here on behalf of the Board of Trustees and the staff of Homes on the Hill, who work in community development in a very broad area of the west side of town, primarily providing housing development services and homeownership services, which include foreclosure counseling, pre-purchase counseling, and also some home maintenance courses. We've been in existence for roughly twenty years. We've done a lot of things. We've had a lot of great partners, which include the state of Columbus, Franklin County, of course, the Board of Commissioners, and a variety of underfunders that help us do what we do. I think we're all aware of the challenges that neighborhoods have, and community development plays an integral part in working with folks in the community and making things happen. So, we're very pleased that you have acknowledged us in the work that we do. It's an honor to represent the city of Columbus as part of being recognized as the Ohio CDC of the Year, and so we thank you for the opportunity. And there's lots more we can do. I would draw your attention to our new website, which we upgraded today, which is www.hoth-cdc.org, where you can find out all about the great things that we do. So, thank you, Ginther, for your recognition. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you for all the great work that you're doing on the hilltop. Any questions or comments from my fellow council members? Let's give a round of applause to you and your staff.
Thank you, President Proton Miller, Councilmember Paley, Councilmember Tyson. I have a very special guest that I want to recognize this evening, and so at this point, I'd like Naranjan, otherwise known as Neil Patel, to a lot of us here in Columbus, to come forward to the podium. With you, your family and friends as well, please come on forward to the front. It's all right if it takes a moment. I'm going to talk about him and embarrass him for a moment or two about this wonderful recognition. This resolution is to recognize, honor, and recognize Ranjan "Neil" Patel for his community activism in central Ohio and for his recent profile publication in The Jewels of India. Mr. Patel and I ran into each other at the inauguration in Washington. He actually went from there to New York City to be recognized as part of this. And my understanding, Mr. Patel, come on across, come on across. Mr. Patel, I believe, is only the second Ohioan to receive this recognition and may be the first citizen of Columbus to receive this recognition. It's a very high-profile recognition for his tremendous contributions to Columbus and central Ohio. I'll read just a couple of highlights and let Mr. Patel talk a little bit about this. This recognition is due to his great personal and professional achievements in the Indian community of central Ohio. Mr. Patel has worked with local government leaders and institutions to help create a sister-city relationship with Columbus and Hefei in China. He also has connected universities in India with the OSU Fisher College of Business, and he's been recognized for his efforts to win support in Congress for the Indo-U.S. nuclear deal in 2006. Mr. Patel is deeply involved in the central Ohio Indian community. He's helped to organize local events to celebrate the Guthrie culture, such as Navarti and the, is it the Ali Festival?
Holli.
Holli Festival?
H-O-L-I.
And he's been president of two significant organizations which service the Indian communities in central Ohio and throughout the U.S., the Gujarati Association and the Federation of Indian Associations. So, just a little bit about this recognition. The Jewels of India is an international publication that highlights leading Indian-American personalities, and we are so proud that Mr. Patel, a proud Columbus resident since, I believe, 1979, thereabouts, with a couple of stops in West Virginia and other places along the way, we are very honored to recognize you here tonight. So, before I ask you to speak, I'll move for adoption of this resolution. Clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein, Miller, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Resolution adopted. Mr. Patel, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President, and all the council members. Thank you very much. And he's over there, he's actually honorable, our auditor, Hugh Darian, and Eric Pfeiffer is here as well, and all the citizens. Without everyone's help, we couldn't make these, you know, things happen. And the Jewels of India, we got it in the, I think, in Ohio, there is a, central Ohio, I'm the one, and the second one from Dayton, Ohio, somebody else. And I'd like to exactly talk about, the, you already said that Fisher College, we connected with the IIM India Ahmedabad, and that's what we have done, and a sister-city relationship with the Barbara Pressner and Mayor Coleman. We went to India in 2008, and we actually made the stronger relation with India, Ahmedabad. And the other one, Hafe, China, I went to exil, delegation with Commissioner Brooks, and we had exactly strengthened our relationship with the Hafe Anhui Province in China, with Columbus, Ohio. And one more thing with John Ogary, Commissioner, and he's the president of the, you know, Franklin County Commissioner, I was, he was leading the delegation, and I was with him in 2011 as well, and we made the stronger relationship with Ahmedabad, India. And Ohio State University, we opened last year Recruiting Center in Mumbai, India, and I was involved with that, and when we went to India with the Commissioner Ogary, I think we looked at the place, and actually, we got right now Ohio State University campus in Mumbai, India. We are recruiting from there to here. Other thing I'd like to exactly talk about, the U.S.-India nuclear deal. You already said that I was instrumental and tried to get the U.S.-India closer relationship with our both nations, because both countries are my mother, Mother America and Mother India. As well, I would like to talk about, I'd like to invite everyone, all of you, and President Ginther, we have a Holli program on March 30th. I'd like to invite everybody who is in the hall, everybody here, we'd like to invite everyone. And second one, FIA doing India Festival every year in West Memorial, and we'd like to invite everyone on that on August 24th, and that's the, I'd like to invite everybody else over there. If you can join on that, thank you very much for your support, and thanks a lot for this resolution, and thank you for recognition. Thanks a lot.
Well, I, before you get away, I need to recognize particularly the young woman to your left, to my right, who I know is very proud of you, but also supports you and all the accomplishments, and obviously, other family members and other folks from the community. If you would just introduce them, I would appreciate it.
This is my better half, Jagruti Patel. This is Rashni. There's a Chandni, and Hanisha. They're all three our daughters. And here is Pradeep Parikh and his wife, Mala. There is a Kanak Uncle. And right here is Mason, Mason Sahib. And Amar Pandey, right over there, is the right now FIA president. And Dr. Jindal is right there, standing right over here, Dr. Jindal.
Nothing happens in the Asian.
And thank you very much, everybody here that came here, and thanks a lot for your support and everything. And exactly, you know, why we are doing this. President Kennedy says, what we can do for our country, not country can do for us, and that is the reason I'm trying my best to do for our nation whatever I can. One more thing I'd like to mention, with the sister-city relationship, in India right now, they're building the Statue of Unity. It's called the Statue of Unity. They're building in India, and with the sister-city relation, that statue is going to be about two and a half times bigger than Statue of Liberty. And that contract got Ohio Company with the sister-city relationship, Turner Construction Company got the contract, and they are building the Statue of Unity in India.
That's wonderful. That's wonderful.
Thank you.
Want to give council members an opportunity to say any words? Councilmember Craig?
Well, let me, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Let me say to you, Neil, how much, you know, over the years that I've known you and appreciate so much your involvement, because it's not embellishing, you really truly are very active in the community for all of us. And I appreciate you certainly encouraging the, reaching across the borders, reaching across the nations. You know, our world is getting smaller, and for all of us, it makes sense. It makes very good sense for us all to work together for the common good, and we appreciate all that you're doing. We appreciate you bringing your family down to council tonight.
Thank you.
Because we see you so much, and I know that you're out in the community a lot, working for your family and certainly working for our community. Congratulations on this extraordinary achievement.
Thank you very much.
And we deeply appreciate your work.
Thanks a lot. Councilmember Tyson?
Thank you, President Ginther, for this resolution, and to Neil and your family, congratulations. And Neil, thank you, because we are a global city, and we need to make sure that we continue to reach out to everyone in our community so that we can embrace their culture and also make sure that we can share cultures across the country, across the water. And so, I thank you for helping us to have businesses in another country and being, you know, an integral part of doing that. So, thank you for making Columbus a global community.
Thank you very much, Tyson. Thanks a lot. Thanks, Ily.
Thank you, Ily. Thank you very much. For the good guys, you go up next.
Are there any comments by our elected officials, city auditor, city attorney? Make sure I'm not missing anybody from the courts that's here. At this time, I request the following ordinances be removed from the consent action portion of the agenda. In Recreation and Parks, zero six five four dash 2013. Are there any other requests by members of council for removal of an ordinance or resolution from the consent action portion of the agenda? Seeing none, may we now have a motion to waive the reading of the titles of thirty-day legislation by the city clerk? Sarah Second. Clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein, Miller, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. Will the clerk now read into the record the ordinance numbers of thirty-day legislation on tonight's agenda for first reading?
Development Committee ordinance is five sixty-four, six thirty-four, six eighty-nine dash twenty thirteen. Public Service and Transportation Committee ordinance is five thirty-seven dash twenty thirteen. Public Utilities Committee ordinance is three ninety-five, four thirty-seven, four forty-six, four fifty-two, four fifty-eight, four seventy, five oh one, five thirty-two, five thirty-nine, five sixty-one dash twenty thirteen.
The following ordinances appear on our agenda as consent actions. Will the clerk now read the ordinance numbers of each into the record?
Resolutions of Expression fifty-four X. sixty-X. sixty-four X. dash two thousand thirteen. Finance Committee ordinance is four twenty-four, four seventy-nine, four ninety-three, four ninety-eight, five oh two, five twenty-three, five thirty-six, five ninety, five ninety-two dash twenty thirteen. Health and Human Services Committee ordinance is six twenty-three, six twenty-four, six twenty-eight, six thirty-one dash twenty thirteen. Administration Committee ordinance five seven three dash twenty thirteen. Development Committee ordinance is five twenty-five, five twenty-six, five twenty-seven, five fifty-seven, five sixty-eight, five seventy-two, six thirteen, six fifty-five, and six seventy-three dash twenty thirteen. Recreation and Parks Committee ordinance is three forty-three, four oh seven, four sixty-eight, five oh seven, five eleven, five twelve, six thirty-three, and six 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 dash twenty thirteen. Small and Minority Business Development ordinance is five sixty-seven and five seventy dash twenty thirteen. Technology Committee ordinance is four twenty and four seventy-five dash twenty thirteen. Public Safety and Judiciary Committee ordinance is two ten, four ninety-four, five twenty, five forty-three, five ninety-one, and six oh one dash twenty thirteen. Public Service and Transportation Committee ordinance is twenty-one ninety-two, twenty-one ninety-five dash twenty twelve. Ordinance is two sixty-three, four seventy-seven, five oh five, five twenty-nine, five thirty-five, five thirty-eight, five forty-six, five sixty-three, and five sixty-five dash twenty thirteen. Public Utilities Committee ordinance is two seventy-two, three twenty-nine, four sixteen, four sixty-one, five seventy-eight, five eighty-four, six twelve dash twenty thirteen. And appointments from the mayor's office numbered A zero zero five two, five three, and six five dash twenty thirteen.
Thank you. May I have a motion for approval of these items designated as consent actions?
No move.
Sarah Second. Clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein, Miller, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. We will now proceed, consent agenda carries. We will now proceed with the second reading of thirty-day table in emergency legislation. The first committee is the Finance Committee. Councilmember Tyson chairs that committee. Madam Chair.
Thank you.
The floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginther. I have Resolution zero four nine nine dash two thousand and thirteen, is to authorize the Finance and Management Director to enter into one UTC contract for the option to purchase city uniforms with Santos Corporation to authorize expenditure of $1 to establish the contract from the Mail Print Services and UTC Fund to waive competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code and to declare an emergency. This particular legislation is for the uniforms for city employees with a variety of apparel selection for one, for protection, safety, identification, and performing their job duties. Proposed option contract is for two years with March thirty-one, two thousand and five as expiration date, with an option to extend one year later. We got, we received three hundred bids for this contract. Three bids were received and which didn't comply with the seized bid specifications. The current contract expired on February twenty-eighth, two thousand and thirteen, and so based upon that, of those three companies that submitted bids, we needed a, one of those individuals to be a local facility, because we need inventory, fitting services, extended sizes for our city employees. And so, based upon that, we, Director Rakowski and his staff worked with this particular company, and they've worked out the pricing, and they can give us extended sizes and do all the work that we need for our employees' uniforms. And that's how we're going to waive competitive bidding, because it's a local company, of the three, this was the only local company. So, if there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
The next ordinance is zero five four, zero five four zero dash two thousand and thirteen, to amend the 2012 capital improvement budget to authorize the appropriation and transfer of $1,670,000 between projects within the Construction Management Capital Improvement Fund to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to contract with Cleveland Marble Mosaic Company for the central safety building exterior membrane and sealant replacement project to authorize the expenditure of $6,170,000 from the Construction Management Capital Improvement Fund and to declare an emergency. Director McKnight, I know you have comments on this legislation.
I'm going to take the comments.
I'm sorry, Director Rakowski, not Director McKnight, certainly you wouldn't. I'm looking at Paul.
We both have the same wavy hair, so I know how you.
I'm much better looking though, Paul.
President Ginther, Chair Tyson, as you know, we've been doing other work in the central safety building. It's one of our highest, really most inefficient, highest-energy-using buildings, and during the course of the stimulus package, we were able to use some of the stimulus money to do retrofits within that facility in regard to some of the internal mechanicals that are going to increase that efficiency quite significantly by about twelve percent. But one of those projects that we received funding for was the replacement or the caulking of the exterior of the building, and during the forensic work that we did on the building at that time, it became clear that there were some larger issues with the building in regard to when it was constructed, and that the vapor membrane in the building that sealed the building before all the stone facade was put on the building was never put in place properly, and that was one of the reasons why the mechanical equipment was running twenty-four-seven. It was also wearing out more quickly than it should because of the fact that the building was never sealed properly. So, we're going to go in and we're going to have to remove in phases the facade off the building and reattach that membrane, and then put the stone back on, and then recaulk that stone to ensure that the building is airtight. We believe that when we do this, that we're going to end up with a building that's forty percent more energy efficient than the building that we currently have. So, we picked up twelve percent by those other retrofits, and we'll get up to forty percent more efficient when we finish this project. It is a large project. was never sealed properly. So we're going to go in and we're going to have to remove in phases the facade off the building and reattach that membrane and then put the stone back on and then recaulk that stone to ensure that the building is airtight. We believe that when we do this, that we're going to end up with a building that's 40% more energy efficient than the building that we currently have. So we picked up 12% by those other retrofits and we'll get up to 40% more efficient when we finish this project. It is a large project. It's going to take a pretty significant time to do because we're going to have to do it in phases. But this is an example of why we went ahead and did the asset management consolidation within the city through our fleet management, facilities management, real estate management, and in this regard, our construction management division. Unlike when this building was originally constructed, we will have many eyes watching the fix that we're going to do here on this building, all the way from Barry Bryant, who heads up our construction management division, who is a licensed civil engineer, to one or more of our very skilled project management staff. We also have a staff augmentation contract with Miles McClellan. They will also be keeping an eye on this for us, as well as Asa Brook, who was the individuals that did that original forensic study on the building. We've kept them on in regard to a construction management role. So we'll have all these eyes watching to ensure that this building gets repaired in the manner that it should be repaired and that we get the type of performance out of this building that we should have had from the beginning.
Thank you, Director McKnight, for that explanation. So we're taking right now kind of an inefficient building and making it efficient. And that's something that we committed to, certainly to our community residents when they allow, when they decided to vote on this tax increase, that we would be running an efficient organization. And so now we will have about a 40% of this building will have efficiencies. And now we've also put in place, of course, asset management and construction management for all the buildings that we build and all the retrofits. So with that, I move for passage.
Clerk call.
Craig Klein, Miller, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 0600, and I'm going to invite Milt Baughman from GCAC to the podium. And this legislation is to authorize the Department of Finance and Management to contract with the Greater Columbus Arts Council, Inc. for the purpose of fostering and sustaining arts and cultural services that enrich the Columbus community, to authorize an expenditure of 97% of the 1.59% presently estimated at about $5,111,900 of the combined rates of 5.1 of the hotel motel excise tax and to declare an emergency. Milt, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chair Tyson, President Ginther, and city council members. I'm Milt Baughman, and on behalf of the GCAC Board of Trustees, and particularly the arts organizations and artists that benefit from city funding, I want to thank you very much for your consideration of our annual contract. The funding that we receive from the city of Columbus is a critical component to funding for our arts and cultural activities in the community. And GCAC takes the funding provided through the bed tax allocation, and we provide that in a number of different ways to arts organizations and artists. One is operating support to our major anchor arts organizations in the community. We also provide project support for the performing arts, including festivals, exhibition, and other performing arts applications. We do capacity building and professional development with our arts organizations and the leaders of those arts organizations. We provide artist fellowships in the areas of visual arts, literary arts, dance, and film video. And finally, we provide artist supply grants to help artists with some of the supplies that are required for their work. So we very much appreciate this great support. In 2012, funding from city council provided us the opportunity to fund 65 arts organizations and almost 100 individual artists. And as I know you all appreciate, our arts and cultural sector is an economic development driver in our community. Americans for the Arts calculated last year that our arts and cultural organizations aggregated $226 million in economic activity and represent 8,500 jobs. So thank you very much for your consideration tonight.
Thank you, Milt, and thank you for sharing the information in regards to the economic impact of the arts. But I know it's also important that having the arts in our community help us to attract and retain new businesses. It also is important for our young professionals because it's about the quality of life. They also are important to our residents and our visitors. I know that, I think those arts organizations served about 300,000, worked with 300,000 young people, children from the school districts last year. So the arts play just an incredible, incredible asset to our community. And for those 65 agencies that are getting dollars, there is absolutely no way that we were not supporting them, that this community would be able to sustain those organizations. And so it's critical that this council supports the arts, but also it's important that GCAC as an organization certainly does an amazing job working with those artists, being able to help them to grow and to develop. And so I thank you for your work.
Thank you.
And Councilmember Paley serves also on the GCAC board. So thank you, Milt. And if there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 0600, and it is to authorize the Department of Finance and Man... Let me correct that one. The next ordinance is 0645 to adopt a capital improvements budget for the 12 months ending December 31, 2013, or until such a time as a new capital improvements budget is adopted, establishing a project budget for capital improvements requiring legislative authorization in 2013, to appeal ordinance number 0368-2012 as amended and to declare an emergency. I have a motion to table this, table pending a public hearing.
Second.
Craig Klein, Miller, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
And our public hearing will be Wednesday, March 20, this Wednesday, at 5:30 in council My next ordinance is 0620, it's Health and Human Services. If I can move to that, please?
Please.
Thank you. And I'm going to ask, there's a number of individuals that want to say a few comments on this resolution, this ordinance. And so I'm going to ask you to start walking toward the podium and be ready to speak. So Randall Sistrunk from the Urban League, Joy Reyes from Columbus Literacy Council, Eric Karalock from Action for Children, Deidra Hamler from SAVE, Lisa Lambert. If you all walk towards the podium, that would be great. Again, this is ordinance 6202-2013 to approve the grant applications of various social service agencies seeking financial assistance to address an emergency human service need pursuant to Columbus City Codes 1959 to authorize the Director of Development to execute grant agreements with various social service agencies and to address and provide for multiple human service needs, to authorize expenditure of $1,150,652, $1,150,000, yep, from the Emergency Services Fund, and to authorize expenditure of $2,235,649 from the general fund and to declare an emergency for a total of $3,386,301. This legislation targets social service agencies that will provide help to families and households through programs that include or are not limited to childcare, substance abuse prevention programs, refugee and resettlement programs, senior care mediation services, services for the disabled, material assistance and food programs, workforce development, youth programs, and other services by assisting with operating needs of those agencies. And just a few of those agencies are here and they want to come up and say a few words. All right?
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, President Ginther, Chairwoman of the Healthy Human Service Committee, Councilwoman Tyson, members of the city council. I think Bo Chilton said this last year about being put on payroll because I'm down here so often. So I'd like to second that if you guys can think about adding me to that. It was a joke. Calm down, people. It was a joke. I am, again, for the record, Yvonne Honeycutt, the Executive Director of the Human Service Chamber of Franklin County. And it is my pleasure to be here to approach you again, to just say thank you for your support and continued funding for Healthy Human Services. As you know, as we look at the state budget and we continue to look at the decrease of autonomy for local governments, it is very important that we continue to provide these kind of support for crucial programs in our community. And with me today are members of the Human Service Chamber and just representing the broader human service sector. So I'm going to obviously allow them to introduce themselves. But I just wanted to say again, on behalf of more than 70 human service agencies within central Ohio, providing a plethora and myriad of services for, you know, more than 200 residents and families, thank you again for your partnership, and we really appreciate the continued support. Councilwoman Tyson, thank you.
Thank you, President Ginther, Councilwoman Tyson, and other council members and city auditor Dorian. Thank you for your support and just echo what Yvonne has shared. My name is Joy Reyes, and I'm the Executive Director for Columbus Literacy Council. And I just wanted to come, and not just for our agency, but for all the agencies that you're supporting as well, to say thank you. The partnership with the city is so important, and to see the city coming together with the other agencies that are working here in the community, the nonprofit organizations, is really a great thing because together we're able to enact change in our community. In particular, the Literacy Council, the board expresses their thank you to you all. We're very pleased to be on the list, to be able to receive funding, and your funding helps us to continue to provide the much-needed services, in particular with our literacy. Last year, it was 250 students that were served through adult basic ed. So we gave them literacy services to help them get new jobs. We provided workforce development training to them at their level that they could understand. And we served over 3,000 of our immigrants into the community, teaching them the English language skills and also helping them become citizens in this country. And more importantly, they now call Columbus home. So I want to thank you already. This year, we have 90 students in our ABE program and 800 in our ESOL program. And to be able to continue services is in part due to your continued funding. Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming down. Thank you.
Thank you for so much.
You're welcome.
President Ginther, Chairman Tyson, my name's Eric Karolock, and I'm newly returned to my home in Columbus from about a decade away in DC. And I'm delighted to be here to offer some thanks for the funding and support that you've provided on behalf of Action for Children, Columbus Early Learning Centers, and the South Side Learning and Development Center. Without this, with this support, you've been able to help children access high-quality early care and education services, parents access both information and referral and other support services, and help providers with meaningful professional development opportunities. I could go on for hours about how great that is and how important it is for strengthening our community, but I know you have a lengthy agenda, and I will just leave it at that. Thank you so much for your support.
Thank you so much, especially for the children that are 2 to 5 for elementary childhood education. It's so important. Thank you so much. Good evening.
Good evening, President Ginther, Chair Tyson, and fellow council members. On behalf of the Columbus Urban League, I would like to extend my thank you to you guys for continued funding and support of the Columbus Urban League. Through the African American Mel Initiative, we've been able to serve over 300 young men in the past year of 2012, and we're looking forward to serving many more in 2013. Not only are we able to help these families with the African American Mel Initiative, but we're also helping in areas of housing with pre- and post-purchase counseling, foreclosure counseling. We're also helping in areas such as workforce development and career development. And we also have a reentry program focusing on helping restored citizens in our community be productive and have a safe, smooth transition back into society. So thank you for your continued support.
Thank you, Andy. Good evening, Deidra.
Good evening, Chairwoman Tyson and President Ginther, and thank you, council members, for having me this evening speak to you. I am Deidra Hamler. I represent SAVE Strategies Against Violence Everywhere. I am the interim executive director. All one needs to do is look at the news and understand how violence plagues our community, our nation, and the most vulnerable of those are our children. The city has done a wonderful job of supporting SAVE in the past, and thank you for continuing through your legislation, through the funding, through the efforts by the mayor, and for keeping this very important issue front and center in our community. Since 1994, SAVE has worked with central Ohio youth and teens to develop resiliencies to prevent violence in their lives, to impact their schools, their families, and their communities. As the rise of violence goes up, unfortunately, funding is going down. And it's this time we need more money, more than ever, to provide these types of programs which provide resiliencies for students and young people to be able to live beyond those circumstances in their lives. So on behalf of SAVE's board, our staff, and our student participants, which at this time are in central Ohio high schools, Independence High School and East High School, where 200 students, up to 200 students and more, receive direct benefits for nine months out of a school year after their school day. And it's an after-school program where they have a curriculum that is developed with them in mind and with their needs in mind. And this program not only impacts them directly, but impacts their families, as well as their peer groups and the community around them. I'd like to thank, on behalf of our staff and board, you for developing, for allowing the funds to keep this program going and hopefully to strengthen the program in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council President Ginther, Councilmember Tyson, and city council members. I would first like to thank you. So happy to be here tonight to say thank you for your continued support. City Year was founded on the powerful idea that young people can change the world, and we are so fortunate to be here in Columbus doing just that and continuing our mission for the students in the city of Columbus. At City Year, we believe that every student has the potential to succeed, and many within our city struggle and face challenges every day in order to stay with being in school and make themselves a success. Through our work in Whole School, Whole Child, and Diplomas Now, we have been successful in providing Tier 1 and Tier 2 educational services and interventions to over 2,000 students this year, and one-on-one and small group interventions to more than 300. Going into 2013, with the critical support and partnership with the city of Columbus, we will look to go into 7th and 8th grade in both South High School and Lyndon McKinley STEM Academy, as well as expanding into the 10th grades in those buildings, as well as at Mifflin High School. And again, I would just like to thank you for the opportunity to be here today and for your continued partnership and support.
Thank you. Thank you. And with that, I think we've heard from a number of the agencies that certainly are being funded by us and the critical needs that we have in our community. And they're pretty much the human services, the third leg of the stool. We funded, you know, we're looking at Experience Columbus, GCAC, and the arts organizations. And so with that, I'd like to move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 0621-2013 to approve the grant applications of five social service agencies seeking financial assistance to address an emergency human service need pursuant to Columbus City Codes 1959 to authorize the Director of Development to execute grant agreements with various social service agencies and to address and provide for multiple human service needs, to authorize expenditure of $140,225 from the Emergency Human Services Fund, and to authorize expenditure of $271,597 from the general fund and to declare an emergency. And the agencies that are receiving these dollars will be the Central Community House for Childcare, Gladden Community House for Material Assistance, Godman Gill, Workforce Development, Join for Material Assistance, St. Stevens for Material Assistance, and St. Stevens for a youth program. I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. And now I have one announcement, and is, again, just to remind everyone of March 20 at 5:30, if you want to come and give us information on the 2013 capital improvements budget, it will be this Thursday. And we are scheduled to vote on the capital budget on April 1. If you have any questions or comments regarding the hearing, call 645-2933. The last announcement will be New Directions Career Center presents Computer Basics, a 20-hour, week-long course for computer novices. The classes begin Monday, March 25, and continue through Friday, March 29, from 9 to 1, 8, to 9 to 1. All the classes will be held at the New Directions Career Center, which is located at 199 East Rich Street. There is a suggested fee of $10 to cover registration costs. However, the center will offer services regardless of ability to pay. If you're interested, please call 614-849-0028 and dial 100. That's all I have. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. Our next committee is the Administration Committee. Councilmember Craig chairs that committee. Mr. Chairman, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, President Ginther. Tonight in the Administration Committee, I first have ordinance 0268-2013 to authorize the Director of the Department of Human Resources to enter into contract with SafeX Inc. for the purpose of providing assistance as they may be necessary in industrial hygiene services and safety program assistance to all divisions, to authorize expenditure of $100,000 from the Employee Benefits Fund to waive the competitive bid requirements of the city's code, and to declare an emergency. The Bureau of Workers' Compensation, otherwise known as BWC, has steadfastly encouraged employers to invest towards the enhancement of occupational health and safety programs and initiatives. This legislation enables the city to do so. It clearly exhibits an ongoing effort to further promote workplace safety, efficient claims management, and effective management care. This contract allows the city to provide industrial hygiene services as required by the state and federal law. Since 2004, SafeX Inc. has done an outstanding job of responding to the industrial hygiene needs of the city's departments. Continuing the existing contractual relationship with SafeX Inc., Compliance Number 311365251, enables the administration to achieve its objective of improving the level of workplace safety and decreasing the risk of exposure to injury. This female-owned business has helped the city in all aspects of industrial hygiene and safety tasks in an efficient and effective manner. Director Bass, could you please speak to the waiver of competitive bidding, any other pertinent information regarding this ordinance?
Thank you. President Ginther, Chairman Craig, members of council, as you've stated, this ordinance does allow the Human Resources Department to continue its existing contractual relationship with SafeX Incorporated. In each of the past five years, the city has seen a reduction in the total number of injury claims, from 1,003 claims in 2007 to 755 claims in 2012. Lost days due to injury was reduced from 53,345 in 2007 to 15,912 in 2012. These reductions are due largely because of our contractual relationship with SafeX Inc. Now, these reductions are also due to the hard work of the safety professionals throughout our city departments. Because of these reductions, the city has received reduced total premium payments to the BWC and has received BWC premium rebates. So a waiver of competitive bid is being requested because of, one, SafeX's outstanding track record of proven success with the city, but more importantly, because SafeX has proven to be the only vendor that has been able to meet all of the requirements for these services. They have proven to be sole source. And for these reasons, I respectfully urge council's passage of this ordinance.
Thank you, Deputy Director Bass. If there are any questions, comments, council members? Hearing none, move for, move for passage.
Craig Klein Miller, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Next is ordinance 0552-2013 to authorize the Director of Department of Technology and the Director of the Human Resources Department to renew an annual software maintenance and support contract with Intellinex Inc. for a document management system utilized by the Human Resources Employee Benefits Risk Management Division. And also as part of the Columbus Human Resources Information System, or CRIS, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code, to authorize expenditure of $7,425 from the Department of Technology Information Services Division, Internal Services Fund, and to declare an emergency. This legislation authorized the Directors of the Departments of Human Resources and Technology to renew an annual software maintenance and support agreement with Intellinex Inc. for document management system. The original agreement, EL005006, was authorized by the ordinance 2051-2004, passed November 22nd, 2004. This agreement was most recently renewed and modified by the authority of ordinance 1809-2011, passed November 14th, 2011, through purchase order EL012311. The renewal of this agreement will provide for software maintenance and support services for the document management system utilized by HR Risk Management Section and as part of the Columbus Human Resources System, otherwise known as CRIS, for the period of April 1st, 2013, through March 31st, 2014. The total cost of renewal is $7,425. Although Intellinex uses resellers for Intelliview licenses, resellers are not permitted to bid on annual software maintenance and support agreements for existing Intellinex customers. As the city purchased its Intelliview software from Intellinex, we must purchase annual support and maintenance from the Intellinex. As such, this ordinance requests a waiver of competitive bidding provision of the Columbus City Code in ordinance with Section 329-27. Deputy Director Bodai, could you please discuss further the request for a waiver of competitive bidding, any other pertinent information relative to this ordinance?
Chairman Craig, President Ginther, members of council. Intellinex and Intelliview application is an integrated document management system that works with the CRIS application to streamline the documentation of payroll and the routing of healthcare benefits. That's essentially it in a nutshell. I respectfully urge council members to consider this for passage.
If there are no additional questions or comments regarding Intellinex, hearing none, I move for passage.
Craig Klein Miller, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you, President Ginther. I do have two very brief announcements. First is Thursday, March 21st, the Columbus, the City of Columbus Veterans Committee will be hosting a Chili Dog fundraiser. Through this program, we're able to collect generous donations and help us support deployed city employees in our community outreach programs. And again, that's generally in the, in the lower floor of Columbus City Council. I certainly encourage all those that are interested to get him, get them a Chili Dog. Next, the Vietnam Veterans Commemoration is coming in under two weeks. They need volunteers to staff the wall at the Vietnam Commemoration between the hours of 9:00 AM until 5:00 PM. And just very quickly, I'll go through the multiple days of events. Tuesday, March 26th, all-day special exhibits. The location will be the State House Museum Gallery, the Ohio Historical Society, and Moats Military Museum in Groveport. And that's an all-day event, the Vietnam Moving Wall. Location, the Ohio Historical Society, at 10:00 AM to 10:45, opening ceremony. The location of the Ohio Historical Society, that will be from 11 o'clock AM to 12 o'clock PM. And there will be a panel discussion of both combat and support veterans who will describe their experiences in the war. And the location is the Ohio Historical Society, that will be from 1:00 PM to 5:00 PM, the Veterans History Project. The Living History Interviews of Veterans, the location, Ohio Historical Society, Wednesday, March 27th, and that's an all-day exhibit. Again, the Vietnam Moving Wall, the location, the Ohio Historical Society, and from 10:00 AM to 11:00 AM. Wednesday, March 27th, Veterans History Project, Living History Interviews of Veterans, 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM, evening reception. And then Thursday, March 28th, all-day special exhibits, the State House Museum Gallery, Ohio Historical Society, Moats Military Museum, all-day, the Vietnam Moving Wall. And then finally, Friday, March 29th, all-day, the Vietnam Moving Wall. Location, Ohio Historical Society, 4:00 to 5:00 PM retiring, the Vietnam Moving Wall. I certainly, if you have questions of more, have asked more information, please contact my office by contacting Sherri Martin at 645-7379. Thank you. That is all that I have this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Craig. Our next committee is the Development Committee. Councilmember Klein chairs that committee. Mr. Chairman, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginther. First in development, 20x2013, to resolve, to accept and support the 2012 Urban Infrastructure Recovery Fund Program Proposed Project List as submitted by the Development Department to recognize and commend neighborhood residents, community groups, and city staff for their commitment to continued improvements in central city neighborhoods and to declare an emergency. We do have three speakers on this ordinance or resolution, but to briefly summarize what this is, is essentially the URIF funding is a, is a funding mechanism that allows residents to have direct input on basically a wish list in a lot of ways of what will make their, their neighborhoods better. So residents, many, many of whom are active in their communities here tonight, work with city staff to identify a project list that they think is needed in their neighborhood. And correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Jones, but all applicants have received funding this year for their proposed projects. Might I correct on that?
Yes, you are correct.
Okay, great. Let's move directly to the speakers. First is Ruth Bell. Thanks for coming down to council. If you could just restate your name and your address, any organizations that you represent?
My name is Ruth.
Oh, you can just right here at the front and center, you get the microphone, the floor, and it's all yours, three minutes.
My name is Ruth Bell, and I'm here representing the Repose Act, Stilton Village Civic. We have applied for lighting to be put in the South Side Lions Playground. We're asking for the passage of this, for the proposed decorative lighting in the South Side Lions Park. We are striving to rebuild our area, and with the help of the Southern Gateway Revitalization Coalition, we are getting more residents involved. And by the means of meetings and expos and surveys, which I've seen some of your faces there, and we really appreciate your participation, and by the means of meetings and the surveys, the opinions, needs, and wants of our residents are being heard. We are no longer the South End. We are the South Side. With new beginnings, new homes, a new health facility, we want the South Side Lions Playground to be the recreational focal point of our area. And with the help of the city, we can achieve this. Thank you for my, listening to me.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. Any questions for Ms. Bell? Okay, our next speaker is Brian Scarpino. Welcome to council, Mr. Scarpino Etal.
Thank you, Chair Klein, I have, and the rest of council. I have with me two of the other commissioners from Livingston Avenue Area Commission, Commissioner Lucy Wolf and Commissioner Ryan Reisiger. But a lot of people have put a lot of time and energy into getting Livingston Avenue back up and running, and I just wanted to take an opportunity to show that, that we really appreciate you also showing some faith in our initiatives. We are going to be having, and we've been working on the streetscape, the neighborhood plan, and we've got some money coming in from Greater Columbus Arts Council for a sculpture that's going to be installed, matching funds from Chase Bank. Norfolk Southern Railroad has contributed, and the development's happening over there at the intersection where we're putting a sculpture, Nelson and Rhodes, and that's not UIRF funding, that's separate funding. But that's where we wanted to put these streetlights and have this traffic study that UIRF is paying for, to help make a really nice gateway into our neighborhood to support economic development and to revitalize the housing stock along Livingston and the neighborhoods around there. And on that note, I do also want to invite everybody from council to come down to Livingston Avenue at Nelson Road, actually, the whole week of April 22nd through the 27th. The Harmony Project is helping us with the Neighborhood Design Center and several other groups bring a sense of festivities, to unveil the sculpture, to have a week of community service. We're going to be doing some litter cleanups on 100 different blocks with the help of the Harmony Project and their participants. So yeah, if you want to come down, there's going to be, we're going to be meeting at a new restaurant right there, Tootie's Chicken and Waffles. That's where everybody's going to be meeting all week with the Harmony Project. But yeah, just to, just to see everybody come together and, and help take this to the next step. And you get this email from Adam the other day to see that we also got funding for decorative streetlights and for a traffic study at the same place where we're trying to do this big gateway to make it, you know, when you're coming from Bexley into Columbus down Livingston, we really want to make that look great. There are private developments going on, tearing down some of the broken-down buildings and putting up brand-new ones, landscaping, streetscaping. So yeah, this traffic study to help us, I was wondering, what's on the next end after we have this week-long celebration? And then I'd get this email and see, it's not over, there's still more momentum, there's still more interest and faith in our community, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scarpino. Any questions or comments? Councilmember Paley.
I just want to commend you, Councilmember Klein, on this project because, as I have said repeatedly, one of the things that the resolution, that the recession did for our neighborhoods is bring them closer together and make our community more invested in itself. And I think this list of projects for our different communities shows the investment that the neighborhoods have in the city as well as ours. So congratulations, Mr. Scarpino. I plan on being down there with the Harmony Project. Can't wait to see it and all the other neighborhoods that are represented by this list. What a great job. Congratulations, Councilmember Klein.
Thank you, Councilmember Paley. Councilmember Craig?
Chair Klein, let me also lend my, certainly lend my support and appreciation for your leadership regarding this matter. Brian, I know how hard all of you are working. Ms. Radford and Mr. Johnson and many of those have worked for a very long time to, working in the community, working with children and families, and those that continue to, to work around the community and to strengthen the community and the families there. But again, thank you for your leadership. I'm excited about what's going to happen there. You know, there's still a lot of vision, there's still a lot of work to be done, but thank you for your leadership, your investment of time, your dedication to all of the families in making our city better.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Craig. Thanks for coming down and sharing the story.
Look forward to seeing everybody April 22nd, the week of, we'll get information on our Facebook page, so.
Check out the Facebook page. Information will be there. And we do have one final speaker, Shannon Cross.
President Ginther, Councilman Klein, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm a member of the North Lyndon Area Commission, and I just wanted to thank the council members for their support of the initiatives on the list. One of them is some revitalization of Kenlon Park in the North Lyndon area. And I wanted to also thank Molly O'Donnell with the city's Department of Rec and Parks. She's been fantastic to work with. She's worked with myself and two members of the Kenmore Area Block Watch, which was active in seeking this grant. And we're very optimistic about the improvements that will come to Kenlon Park as a result of this grant. We're looking forward to continued revitalization of the area, and we're looking forward to great activities in the park as a product of having it be a friendlier place to be and families feeling more welcomed in the area. So thank you once again.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Ms. Cross? Any questions or comments from Ms. Cross? Great. We just heard a snippet of about, what, four or five projects out of the 44 that are being funded in this, through this process. So 44 projects citywide, I urge my colleagues to support and move for passage.
Second. Craig Klein Miller, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
63X 2013, a resolution in support of Cristo Rey Columbus High School in its efforts to receive Ohio State Historic Preservation Tax Credits for the redevelopment of the former Ohio School for the Deaf at 400 East Town Street and to declare an emergency. This resolution lends support to Cristo Rey in receiving historic tax credits to make this project possible, repurposing this historic building into a, into a school will bring some new life, additional new life into downtown, so this is a, it's a great project involved with a lot of stakeholders. I move for passage.
Second.
Craig Klein Miller, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
571 2013, and as I read it, like to invite Dan Sullivan to come to the podium, to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to contract with HNS Sports Group to provide support for the President's Cup 2013, to authorize the expenditure of $200,000 in the general fund, and to declare an emergency. And I'm going to let, I'm going to not steal Dan's thunder, but looking at the numbers of what this event means to the, to the city and to the region is pretty impressive, and I'm hoping you'll share that with us, Dan.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Chair Klein, President Ginter, council members, appreciate the time and the interest to support. One quick update and then just a reminder of the significance of the event. We are, we're on a fast track, and we're doing very well with the cooperation of Experienced Columbus, the Columbus Sports Commission, Linda Logan is with me tonight, in creating an environment that all those travelers coming outside of Columbus will surely enjoy, using all the assets that are related to us in downtown Columbus, whether it's the Columbus Hilton, the Columbus Commons, area restaurants, all the meeting space will be occupied in a way that frankly, from our perspective, hasn't been used before when it comes to the golf world. We'll have a direct connection between downtown Columbus and Dublin where the, where the event will be held. So very excited about how things are progressing, sales are robust, and from a corporate and individual perspective, we should be in great shape. Just a quick reminder with the event itself, 225 countries and territories will receive this through broadcast, over 600 million households will receive the President's Cup the week of September 30th, and it will put not only golf in a world spotlight, but also Columbus, Ohio in the region. And for all those reasons, we're excited about bringing this event to Columbus and partnering with the city and everyone that's involved. I can answer any questions.
Can you maybe just talk about how the Hilton's going to be the main spot for all the events?
Yep. So when we, when the PGA Tour selected Columbus, Ohio, there was a need to ensure that we had a hotel that could satisfy all the needs related to the players and all the dignitaries coming in from around the world, and we showed them plans of the new Hilton, this was two years ago, and instantly fell in love with it, now that's a reality. We had the, the folks from the PGA Tour in here last week, they stayed in the hotel, we're occupying the entire hotel for the entire week, and a significant amount of money will be spent through the hotel, and every room from Monday through Sunday, actually into Monday after the event, will be utilized, and it is the official host hotel for the event.
That's terrific. This is significant return on investment, not only in marketing for the city of Columbus and the region, but also the ROI of visitor spending probably between 20 and 40 million dollars.
No question. And that's not just to say that we're working with the Hilton, we're working all the downtown Columbus hotels as well as hotels in Dublin, and as you point out, 22 million in, in consumer spending within the marketplace is projected, and why, the way things are going right now, we should be able to hit that and eclipse it.
That's terrific. Any questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you.
Best of luck to you, we're looking forward to it. I move for passage.
Second. Craig Klein Miller, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
Like to turn the microphone over to my colleague, Councilmember Tyson.
Yes. Ordinance number 0587-2013, to authorize the Director of Development to amend the Third Avenue and Olentangie River Road Tax Increment Financing Agreement with NRI Equity and Land Investments LLC by entering into a First Amendment to the Tax Increment Financing Agreement substantially in the form of, on the form on file of the Director's Office and to declare an emergency. I first move to amend the 30-day.
Second. 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 Second.[960.29]
Great to have these young people on the city's campus and for them to learn from us and we to learn from them and so on because they're going to be the future leaders of our city and we need to continue to embrace them and help to provide them with those critical work skills and certainly it gives them a great place to be during the summer and so it is just, it's a blessing that we can do this and so thank you Chairman Klein for putting on this ordinance and thank you Director McKnight for working with our young people through your department. Thanks so very much. It's so critical for these young people.
Thank you Councilmember Tyson. Any other questions or comments? I move for passage.
Craig Klein Miller, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
The next two ordinances, 513 and 514, are related and I want Director McKnight to just give a brief update on apps and how this affects apps. Please.
President Ginter, Chairman Klein, members of council, these ordinances will allow us to enter into contracts with both communities for new directions and with the Columbus Urban League to continue with our apps program and the Neighborhood Violence Interruption Program. As you recall, last year we began and worked with Urban League and through the Urban League retained some folks who would be working in the neighborhoods to interact with a lot of the young people who were potentially maybe making some bad decisions. I think we had some real good success with the program in 2012 and we're going to continue the program in 2013. We are splitting it into two contracts this year, partially in an effort to have some more community-based facilities. Communities for New Directions, for example, has some facilities in some of these neighborhoods, so they'll work within those neighborhoods. Urban League and then working with some other folks will work in a couple of the other neighborhoods. So it's a continuation of the program that we began in 2012 and I think, given some time in the next two or three years, I think this program can really begin to have some significant impact on the youth of Columbus.
Thank you Director McKnight. 513, 2013, authorize the Director of Recreation and Parks to enter into an agreement with the Community for New Directions to provide professional and fiscal services related to the implementation of the Neighborhood Violence Intervention Program 2013 contract to authorize the expenditure of $294,000 from the Recreation and Parks Fund 285 and to declare an emergency. Questions or comments? I move for passage.
Craig Klein Miller, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
514, 2013, to authorize the Director of Recreation and Parks to enter into an agreement with the Columbus Urban League to provide professional and fiscal services related to the implementation of the Neighborhood Violence Intervention Program 2013 contract to authorize the expenditure of $333,000 from the Recreation and Parks Fund 285 and to declare an emergency. I move for passage.
Craig Klein Miller, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
517, 2013, to authorize and direct the Director of Recreation and Parks to accept a grant and enter into an agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the Goodell Street Bike Improvements to authorize the appropriation of $3,434,787 to the Recreation and Parks Grand Fund and to declare an emergency. If you'd just Director McKnight, give us an idea of where geographically this bike path improvement is going to be.
President Ginter, Chairman Klein, members of council, this is in the vicinity of Goodell Boulevard and 315 and the Olentangie River. We're picking up the bike path. You may have seen recently the extension of the bike path coming up to Goodell Boulevard from the north. This will take the bike path to the west now over both the, parallel to the Goodell Park Bridge, going over both 315 and the Olentangie River and getting back down to grade at Olentangie Road, which will eventually lead into the Brewer's Yard area and Grandview and to the Scioto Trail.
Okay. Any questions or comments? I move for passage.
Craig Klein Miller, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
And one final piece of legislation on page 12 of tonight's agenda, 654, 2013, to authorize and direct the appropriation of $181,400 within the Neighborhood Initiatives Fund to direct and transfer an appropriation of $138,285 from the Neighborhood Initiatives Fund to the Recreation and Parks Operating Fund for expenditures related to a special events coordinator and a fitness coordinator for seniors and declare an emergency. The special events coordinator piece fits well with, in ordnance is coming on later tonight in rules and reference, I believe, but the senior fitness coordinator position is going to be an opportunity to expand senior fitness programming in the city of Columbus. We have terrific programming all around, but the senior centers are, I was just at Gillie the other day and it amazes me just how packed they are because of the terrific program we have. And back in, before the significant cuts the city had to undertake in the mid 2000s, we actually had many seniors participating in a senior Olympics, for example. This ordinance will appropriate money to bring in a senior fitness coordinator to help perhaps bring the senior Olympics back to Columbus where it once was held and to expand programming to allow seniors, to give them options, physical fitness options, to complement many of the other things that we're doing in the city of Columbus. Any questions or comments?
I think you said it right off.
I'm sorry? There. I move for passage.
Craig Klein Miller, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
Thank you so much.
Thank you Councilmember Klein. President Pro Tem Miller, I believe the next three committees will, you'll be leading us through in one way, shape, or form. Do you want to recess now and reconvene for zoning? Do you need a couple of minutes in between? Okay. I entertain a motion to recess regular meeting number 13. Second, clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein Miller, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
Recess regular meeting number 13. We will reconvene for zoning in five minutes. Regular number, regular meeting number 14, when how come to order. Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the journal?
So moved.
Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein Miller, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
Are there any communications and reports received by the city clerk?
No, there are not.
Are there any first readings of 30-day legislation?
No, there are not.
We will now go to the zoning committee. President Pro Tem Miller chairs the committee. Mr. Chairman, the floor is yours.
Thank you President Ginter. In the zoning committee tonight, we have three items. The first one is 450, 2013, to rezone 700 Children Drive being 54 plus and minus acres located west of Parsons Avenue and north of Kennedy Drive and generally extending from southeast corners of Parsons Avenue and Muberry Street, east to the southwest corner of Muberry Street in the First Alley, east of and parallel with 18th Street, south to the northwest corner of the First Alley, east of and parallel with 18th Street and the Livingston Avenue, south to the southeast corner of Livingston Avenue in Hale, in Hale Avenue, west to the southeast corner of Jackson Street and Putnam Street, west to the southwest corner of Jackson Street and Parsons Avenue, and north to the northwest corner of Parsons Avenue and Denton Alley, north and west to the southwest corner of Livingston and Parsons Avenues, north to the northwest corners, corner of Parsons Avenue and Muberry Street, from C4 Commercial CPD, Commercial Plan Development, and R2F Residential Districts, to CPD, Commercial Plan Development District. The applicant is Nationwide Children's Hospital. Proposed use is adding .64 acres at the corner of Livingston and Parsons Avenues and .082 acres near the intersection of 17th and Jackson Street to the existing Commercial Plan Development District. It received a Development Commission recommendation for approval and also the Columbus South Side Area Commission recommendation for approval. And lastly, it did receive the City Department recommendation for approval. And I have no speaker slips. If there are no questions or comments, I would like to first to request to amend to emergency.
Mr. Chairman, we need to go by voice, so that obviously means we're going to have one abstention on this, so I don't think we're going to be able to amend to emergency.
Okay. I request a voice vote for, to request to amend to emergency.
We don't have the votes to amend to emergency this evening.
Oh, okay. Okay.
So we're just, I'm not sure, do we want to, is the applicant present?
So are we going to have to go ahead and table this unless?
We can either go 30-day or table and amend to emergency on April 1st. We'll give you all.
Okay. Oh, okay. Okay.
We could always just go to the next piece of legislation, Mr. Chairman, and we come back to this.
Well, we'll go to the next one while they work it out. Okay. All right. For 30 days? So we would like to request to amend to 30-day. Is that possible?
Just move for passage.
Just table for 30 days?
We want to move for passage. 30-day legislation is okay.
Okay. By voice.
Is there a second? Swirls. Clerk call the roll by voice.
Craig.
Yes.
Klein.
Sorry for the confusion. I'm standing.
Miller.
Yes.
Paley Tyson. President Ginter.
Yes, legislation passes.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Next is 524, 2013, to rezone 5702 High Rock Drive being 23.87 plus and minus acres located on the south side of Central College Road, 827 plus and minus feet east of North Hamilton Road from LAR-12 Limited Apartment Residential District to LAR-12 Limited Apartment Residential District. The applicant is Traditions at Rocky Fork LLC. The proposed use is multi-unit residential development and it received a Development Commission recommendation for approval and also the City Department recommendation for approval. And I would like to first to request to waive second reading.
Craig Klein Miller, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
And next, I would like to move for passage.
Craig Klein Miller, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
And last, I have 2629, 2012, to rezone 2214 Ekin Road being .4 plus and minus acres located at the northwest corner of Ekin Road and Whitethorne Avenue from C3 Commercial District to LC4 Limited Commercial District. The applicant is Khalid Jashan. Proposed use is limited commercial development. It received a Development Commission recommendation for approval and also the Greater Hilltop Area Commission recommendation for approval. And it finally also received the City Department recommendation for approval. And I have no speaker slips, so I would like to first to request to take from the table.
Craig Klein Miller, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
Next, I would like to move for passage.
Craig Klein Miller, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
And that is all we have in zoning tonight. President Ginter.
There's nothing else to come before the zoning committee this evening. Entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein Miller, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
Regular meeting number 14 adjourned. We will reconvene, regular meeting number 13 in just a few minutes. I'd like to entertain a motion to reconvene regular meeting number 13.
So moved.
Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein Miller, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
Thank you. Our next committee is the Small and Minority Business Development Committee. President Pro Tem Miller chairs that committee. Mr. Chairman, the floor is yours.
Thank you President Ginter. In the Small and Minority Business Development Committee, we have two items. The first one is 503, 2013, to authorize the Columbus City Council to expend $14,000 from the jobs growth fund to enter to a contract with Sinclair Media 2 for sponsorship of the WXYZ ABC6, February 27th, April 17th, July 17th, and October 2nd, 2013, the job boot camps and to declare an emergency. This legislation actually allows the city of Columbus with the Department of Technology to provide sponsorship to the job boot camp where we actually set up close to 13 to 14 laptops at the job fair in order for participants to actually apply online from going to the several different booths of them going to, with the ABC's job fair. So before, they did not have these laptops set up, so individuals would show up at the boot camp, go to the several different booths, and each of the companies would just tell them, when you get home, apply online. So what we have provided, having these 14 laptops, we have those participants go to our section of the boot camp and fill out those applications online. And it's been very helpful for the residents because if they have questions or comments, they can actually go back to the booth, get those answers, and then come back and complete the application online. So I'd like to thank City Council for our support in helping the residents in getting these jobs. And at the last job boot camp, there actually was a line outside the door at 11:00 AM and it stayed quite busy throughout the day. So it's something that we're looking forward to and when I show up, I'm amazed at how many individuals who line up at the laptops and sometimes need some minor assistance in applying for these jobs. And it just really puts my, me in a situation where City Council is definitely supporting job growth by attending this event. Councilmember Tyson?
Thank you Chairman Miller and just want to say, certainly support you with this legislation. As you just mentioned, it's critically important for those individuals as they're there applying for jobs and if they had to go back home and had to then apply for the job, you know, apply online, how it takes so much time to be able to get a job and what you have done has to allow those individuals to apply immediately and be able to be getting, moving forward with their job expiration. So really, thank you for it. Sometimes it doesn't take a lot of money to make a big difference and thinking about what $14,000 will do in terms of helping to change people's lives. So thank you for this legislation and moving, helping to move people's lives forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. If there are no other questions, I'd like to move for passage.
Craig Klein Miller, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
Next is 569, 2013, to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter to a contract with Tech Columbus for the purpose of administering the Entrepreneurial Signature Program to authorize expenditure of $500,000 from the general fund and to declare an emergency. And at this time, I'd like to have the CEO of Tech Columbus, Mr. Tom Walker, to make some brief comments.
President Ginter, Chairman Miller, members of council, thank you for your time tonight. I am Tom Walker, president of Tech Columbus. At Tech Columbus, we work with startup entrepreneurs here in the Columbus region and help them as they're starting high-growth businesses here in our region. These are businesses that create rapid job growth and knowledge-based jobs for our community and create wealth for the citizens in our region. We, your support allows us to access a state grant through the Third Frontier Program to provide these services and help the entrepreneurs start their businesses and attract other capital to the region.
This is something that, since I've been on council, is something I've been very much supportive of, but this is really one of the things that I believe that really sets Columbus apart from the other cities, not just in Ohio, but even in the country, about the support of where we have these innovations in these startup companies where I believe when it comes down to future companies and job growth, it's going to be, we have to start now supporting these companies in order for them to become small and then eventually the medium and then what I believe is also the large companies. And so with these funding that we've seen in the past is that sometimes it allows that company to kind of be married to Columbus and make sure that they stay in Columbus.
You're absolutely right Chairman Miller and we have some great examples of that. One I like to use is a company called ZNode. ZNode is a company that we helped in 2007 start up. By 2008, they had 15 employees and today in the Columbus region, they have growing nearly 300 jobs. And they have been actually purchased by a UK company, but that company has reinvested in Columbus because those employees are committed here.
And when it comes to some of the technology companies, it's important to know that with Columbuses, with our cost of living versus other cities across the country, makes us much more attractive for those companies to stay right here. So that's from all of the things that we do with City Council and also with the mayor's office of keeping everything going in Columbus with a momentum. I think that this portion of what we fund for Tech Columbus is a great investment for the city of Columbus. Thank you for coming now. Any questions for him?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walker.
Thank you.
If there are no other questions or comments, I'd like to move for passage.
Craig Klein Miller, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
Is it okay to move to technology?
Okay.
In the technology committee, our first legislation is 421, 2013, to authorize the Director of Department of Technology to modify and renew a contract with Emerson Network Power, Leaper Services Incorporated for annual maintenance, upgrade software and related services associated with batteries, uninterrupted power supplies, UPS systems, and to use capital funds to replace capacitors and fans on the UPS systems in order to extend their useful life to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Codes, to authorize the expenditure of $61,479.79 from the Department of Technology Information Services Division Internal Services Fund and $39,881.40 from the Capital Improvement Fund and to declare an emergency. In the process of waiving competitive bidding, it was, it's noted that the Emerson Network Power and Leaper Services is the only factory-authorized service provider for this UPS equipment used at the city data centers. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein Miller, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
553, 2013, to authorize the Director of Department of Technology and the Columbus Public Health Department to modify and renew an annual contract for next-gen software license support and related services with Mount Carmel Health Systems to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code, to authorize the expenditure of $170,043.9 from the Department of Technology Internal Services Fund and to declare an emergency. The next-gen system enables the Columbus Public Health Department to actually operate five major clinical operations. That includes patient registration, appointment scheduling, monitoring, and tracking of patient test results, and also the creation and processing of electronic medical records. And also is noted that although we waive competitive bidding, the Mount Carmel actually responded with their amount, which is close to $190,000 less than the lowest bidder, and that was the reason for a waiving competitive bidding. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein Miller, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
554, 2013, to authorize the Director of Department of Technology and the Director of the Department of Columbus Public Health to modify an existing contract with Language Access Network LLC for streaming video and phone-based interpretation services to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Codes, to authorize the expenditure of $20,002.50 from the Department of Technology Internal Services Fund and to declare an emergency. And this was waived for competitive bidding because the, the timing of this wouldn't allow for another supplier in order to continue the existing services with the language interpretation services. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein Miller, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
And last in the technology committee is 661, 2013, to authorize the Director of Department of Technology to modify an existing contract with ICE Miller Whiteboard LLC to provide professional services to assist with implementing the broadband and fiber optic plan for the city for $20,000 and to authorize a $5,000 contingency for any unforeseen project changes to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code, to authorize the expenditure of $25,000 from the Department of Technology Information Services Division Internal Services Fund and to declare an emergency. And the current vendor, ICE Miller Whiteboard LLC, actually has been working with the city and has the best knowledge to complete this project in order to continue the necessary services with the fiber optic plan. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein Miller, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
And that is all we have in technology committee tonight. President Ginter.
Thank you President Pro Tem Miller. Our next committee is the Public Service and Transportation Committee. Councilmember Paley chairs that committee. Madam Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you President Ginter. In public service and transportation this evening, we have ordinance 0383, 2013, to amend the 2012 CIB to authorize the transfer of funds and appropriation within the Streets and Highways Geo Bonds Fund, to authorize the Director of Public Service to reimburse the Street Construction Maintenance and Repair Fund for labor, equipment, and material costs, and to authorize the expenditure of $48,316 from the Streets and Highway Geo Bonds Fund for the reimbursement to the Street Construction Maintenance and Repair Fund. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein Miller, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
Next, I have ordinance 0504, 2013, to authorize the City Auditor to transfer funds from the Information Service Capital Improvements Fund and the Streets Highway Bond Fund to the Federal State Highway Engineering Fund, to authorize the City Auditor to appropriate $12,000, $12,176,396.63 within the Federal State Highway Engineering Fund and to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into an info contract with Gutenkoff Corporation for the construction of Columbus Traffic Signal System Phase B project for the Department of Public Service, authorize the expenditure of $12,176,396.63 from the State Highway Engineering Fund and to declare an emergency. This legislation authorized the Director of Public Service to enter into a contract for the construction of the Columbus Traffic Signal System for the Department of Public Service. This particular legislation identifies Part II of a five-part program for the Columbus Traffic Signal System project. This project includes installation of new central traffic signal control system with new software and hardware. This new traffic signal control system will be able to serve central Ohio stakeholders with system connectivity and interoperability, which is recommended in the Columbus Computerized Traffic Signal System 2005 study. Phase B will continue the migration of existing central traffic signal control systems to an open architecture utilizing the fiber optic cable infrastructure being installed in the CTSS Phase A project. This project includes the development of plans for the migration of up to 300 intersections into the new central traffic control system. This project will result in Columbus having one of the most state-of-the-art traffic signal systems in the United States. In cooperation with the Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission, as well as many other suburbs, many other traffic signals within the city will be updated. The city has received reimbursement grants in the amount of $8,926,369.63 in federal congestion mitigation air quality funds. The Department of Technology is contributing $750,000 from capital improvement funds designated for this purpose specifically for an upgrade to the fiber optic cable, which is not reimbursable by the grant. The contract amount shall be $11,69,451.48 with about $1,106,000 for construction, administration, and inspection services. The Department of Public Service will be contributing $2,500,000 appropriated and expended within the Federal State Highway Engineering Fund. Would Council, President Pro Tem Miller like to comment about the technologies part of this ordinance?
Yes. Thank you Councilmember Paley. One of the important factors here is that when we talk about the fiber optics and using it within this project, it's great to know that the city actually owns the
construction, administration, and inspection services. The Department of Public Service will be contributing $2,500,000 appropriated and expended within the Federal State Highway Engineering Fund. Would Council President Protem Miller like to comment about the technology as part of this ordinance?
Yes. Thank you, Councilmember Paley. One of the important factors here is that when we talk about the fiber optics and using it within this project, it's great to know that the city actually owns this in order for us to save costs versus us going elsewhere to get this type of fiber and paying for that. So this is where, when I promote the fiber, is we're saving the citizens money by us owning this fiber and using it the way that we don't have to lease it ourselves. So this is one of the things that I think that, working with Councilmember Paley, how it's going to be a great advantage for the Columbus residents, knowing that we will be servicing the fiber and using it for these projects.
Councilmember Tyson.
Thank you, Chairwoman Paley, and also President Protem Miller. And just to add to this, just the leveraging of the dollars. I mean, clearly, if it's a $12 million project and $8 million, I mean, you've just stated all the different places, places where the dollars are coming from, and we're putting a minimal amount of money in to be able to have the state-of-the-art traffic light lighting system in our city. So congratulations to the both of you and for leveraging those dollars, and thank you to the administration for all of your work. Thank you.
Yes, I would like to thank Director Kelsey and his team for their leadership on this project. This is another great example of coordination between intergovernmental agencies in order to be more efficient and effective. I urge your support on this ordinance, and if there are no other questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
That's all I have on Public Service and Transportation this evening. May I move on to Public Utilities? In Public Utilities this evening, we have ordinance 0409, 2013, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a construction contract with Kenmore Construction Company for the Southerly Wastewater Treatment Plant Corrosion Prevention and Protective Coating System Phase II project, and to transfer within the expend $2,883,069.20 in funds from the Sanitary Sewer General Obligation Fund, and to amend the 2012 Capital Improvements Budget. If there are no comments or questions, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Next, we have ordinance 0485, 2013, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a construction contract with Underground Utilities, Inc., for the Division of Sewage and Drainage for the Skyline Drive Sewer Improvements Project, to transfer $860,053.60 and expend up to $893,053.60 in funds from the Sanitary Sewer Obligation Bond Fund, and to amend the 2012 Capital Improvements Project, and to declare an emergency. This area is currently on individual septic systems. This resident-initiated project will consist of constructing a sanitary sewer in the Skyline Drive Smafer Road neighborhood located in northwest Columbus. The sanitary sewer systems are as important to health as safety of Columbus, as well as maintaining sidewalks and roads. This project will help lessen the overflow from the Olentangie River watershed, and also eliminate standing water in the front and backyards of residents living in this project area. Nine bids were received for this project. It was determined that Underground Utilities Incorporated was the lowest, best, and most responsible bidder for this project. I would like to thank Director Davies and his team for their leadership on this program. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Lastly, but certainly not least, I would like to wish the Jewish community a happy Passover next Monday, since City Council will not be here. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Paley. Our final committee this evening is Rules and Reference Committee. I chair that committee. The code change we are considering tonight represents a shared effort on the part of the community and the city to address the somewhat welcome challenges we've experienced in recent years as Columbus has played host to an increasing number of running and walking events that wind their way through our neighborhoods and business districts. The increase in these events is a positive sign that we, as a community and as a country, are beginning to embrace a healthier, active lifestyle. While many of the races that take place in the city are smaller in scale, Columbus also welcomes internationally recognized races, including Coleman Race for the Cure, Cap City Half Marathon, and the Columbus Marathon. And somewhere in between, we've seen an increase in the number of national companies and race promoters who bring people from across the city and the region to compete in fun run-walk events that help introduce our downtown community to those who otherwise might not visit. However, with the many visitors these races bring and the net positive impact for the local economy, so too came an increasing number of challenges and growing frustrations from local business owners, and residents concerned with limited notice, and increasingly frequent rolling street closures due to race events, especially in the popular race route areas of downtown, the short north, and the arena district. And with these challenges came a realization that in many ways, our existing code, rules, and procedures had not kept up with the growth of our city, and were not consistent with what other cities our size and standing have in place to balance the interests of race organizers and participants, and those who make our city their home and place a business every day, not just on race day. So with this in mind, council brought together stakeholders, including community members, business owners, city administrators, and race coordinators, to develop a process and identify relevant code changes needed to address these concerns. Over the past several months, we've held many meetings and researched how other cities handle races and walks. The end result is the code change we have today, which creates a new race event permit that will give Recreation and Parks the opportunity to better communicate with businesses and residents with far earlier notice, provide police the tools needed to manage race routes, and to address oversaturation of events in certain areas of town, and to ensure both police and fire are able to manage events in a manner that ensures the safety of our citizens and race participants. With that, I'd like to give Recreation and Parks Director, Director McKnight, the opportunity to say a few words and speak to the code change. It will be largely administered by the Recreation and Parks Department, and staffed by dedicated professionals under his charge, and funded through a 2013 City Council Budget Amendment. Director?
President Ginther, members of council, thank you for this opportunity. This has been something, I think, that is long overdue. And as you said, I've told a lot of folks that we're kind of the victim of our own success downtown. As Columbus has grown, there's more and more of these events, and the coordination of these events has become more and more of a challenge. And I think, as you indicated also, the impact on the neighborhoods and some of the surrounding communities, it started to, I guess, their patience is starting to wear a little thin. So this gives us an opportunity to relook at that process, to create a longer lead time. There is a community notification process as part of this new permitting process, which I think will help a great deal in getting the word out as to when these events are occurring, the routes. Going to look at some other routes as well. One of the documents I saw just late last week that our permit office has pulled together now as a result of this effort is a master calendar of all of the events in the downtown area. And it's, we'll be getting that out. You'll be getting copies of that here very shortly. But it's an impressive list. It also is, when I look at it and the impact of our staff, it seems a little overwhelming at times when you look at all the things going on downtown. And in coordinating these races, we're not looking just at the race events, but other events that are occurring downtown, from the Arts Festival to the Jazz and Rib Fest and a lot of the smaller events as well. So we're looking forward to moving forward with this. We will be bringing some additional staff on to help administer the program. And I think in the long run, with the process that you've outlined involving both the community, the event coordinators, city staff, city council, the administration, we've got a good program here and a good process now, which will address some of the concerns that came up last year, and allow us to move forward in a very positive manner.
Thank you, Director. Any questions for Director McKnight? Any comments from council members? Councilmember Tyson?
Yes, thank you, President Ginther. Just want to say thank you to you, and I know to Kelly Arthur Hikes, and I guess to Ken Paul and all the staff members from council, as well as the administration that have worked on this. As you know, Columbus is an open and diverse city, and we need to make sure that we're continuing to be able to, it's important to host all these different events and parades, et cetera, that are in our community, these races, and just to continue to move us as a city forward in terms of its quality of life. So I thank you for the work that's been done here, because we want to make sure that our neighbors, the neighborhoods in which individuals are going through for these different events, feel that the neighbors want to feel like it's important for them to have this in their community, as well as the individuals who are hosting those events, feel comfortable in those communities. So I thank you for the hard work that you have done with this legislation.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. I do, I appreciate you recognizing, Kelly, I did want to mention a couple other folks, in particular, Columbus Police Lieutenant Barth, Columbus Police Officer Green, Columbus Fire Lieutenant Smith, and also Amanda Ford of Public Safety. Also, a special thanks to Jason Nicholson, Ron Keller, and Christina Gipson from Recreation and Parks, Ashley Sen of the Mayor's Office, and Jennifer Gams of the City Attorney's Office. And as Councilmember Tyson mentioned, the person who spearheaded this entire effort and the working group that brought us a very much improved product is our own Kelly Arthur Hikes from the Legislative Research Office, and appreciate her leadership and work. Are there any questions or comments? I move for, pass it. I'm sorry? Oh, I'm glad you mentioned that. We have one speaker, I believe, in support of this this evening, Mr. Nathaniel Wilkins. Mr. Wilkins, if you'd come forward to the podium. I believe you've signed up to speak on 574, 2013 in support.
Andrew Ginther, could I have you, eh, to come down and get these documents, please? You may start my clock, young man. I do support this as 125% of this. It's also through the safety cleanup, when y'all have a raise to neighborhoods and downtowns, also the safety of the residents and children. And I just want to say, thank you, 100%. All of y'all should get a copy of that, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins. Are there any questions or comments for Mr. Wilkins this evening? Thanks for coming down to share your support of this code change. Nothing else? Any additional questions or comments from council members? Entertain a motion for passage. Sir Second? Clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein, Miller, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Passed. And an item that I thought was on the consent agenda but didn't make it there, I want to just move for adoption of Resolution 0057-X-2013, to recognize Stephen Steinauer as 2012 Banker of the Year. Sir Second? Clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein, Miller, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Resolution adopted. And Councilmember Tyson?
Thank you, President Ginther. Just want to make sure that the hearing is Wednesday. I think the last time I may have said Thursday. It's Wednesday at 5:30 for the capital budget. Thank you, here in council chambers.
There's nothing else to come before council for regular meeting number 13. I think we had so much fun in regular meeting number 14, we're going back there in just a moment. But I'd entertain a motion to adjourn regular meeting number 13. Clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein, Miller, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
We will stand in adjournment, and I'll entertain a motion to reconvene regular meeting number 14. Clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein, Miller, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Regular meeting number 14 reconvened. We will go to the zoning committee. President Protem Miller, floor is yours.
Yes, I would like to reconsider 450, 2013 with a voice vote.
Clerk call the roll by voice.
Craig?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Paley?
Yes.
Tyson?
Yes.
President Ginther?
Yes, reconsider 0450-213.
And next, I would like to move to waive second reading with a voice vote.
Sir Second? Clerk call the roll.
Craig?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Paley?
Yes.
Tyson?
Yes.
President Ginther?
Yes, the legislation passes. Anything else, Mr. Chairman?
That is it.
We do have several non-agenda speakers we'll take momentarily, but I will entertain a motion to adjourn regular meeting number 14.
Sir Second.
Clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein, Miller, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
We stand in adjournment.